This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
My apologies, we'll start over. Tom, you don't have minutes, you'll get them soon. Okay, thank you. Mayor's not in here yet, so public speak. The way I'm gonna run this meeting is the rules of the council. Same way, public speak will be at the beginning of meetings. And that's the only time the public will have a chance to speak regardless of what the budget situation, budget hearings are. Only because these tend to get long. And I want to give the public the opportunity to speak. Each one of these departments get a public hearing anyway at the full council. So is there anyone from the public who would like to speak right now? Use the raise your hand feature. How do I get to that? I see no one raising their hands. So first up is Public Works. I'm gonna share my screen. What? It won't let me share.
I think you have to make yourself the owner maybe?
I am the host. Meeting host. This is bad. I was just sharing. What do I do Omar? I mean it says share, it said there was an error and it wouldn't let me share my screen. Share right here. It blacked out now. You wanna go down and see? I apologize everybody, but that's the way I can look at the budget. You know what, I'm just gonna, can I restart the meeting? Should I do that?
Well then they'll join again.
No, I don't wanna do that. That's terrible.
Let's just see if Karen says. You have to share it though.
Tom, do you have the budget up on your computer?
You know what, let me see if I can join it and it will come for mine.
Okay. This really angers me because I've been here for this all day. So Omar, how do I make you a co-host? Add as co-host? No, he's on there. Can you share your screen of page 66, Public Works? I just asked you to scroll. This is terrible. It might be because I'm using this. I was just sharing it though, wasn't I?
You were, but you also joined, right?
No, I was always, I was always the host. It's not letting you share either? This is terrible. I'm gonna call Corinne.
I'd be, uh, hit her on Red Call.
Is she coming? Nobody can share. And when I tried to share, it said an error occurred. And then now it's blacked out. And he can't either. I made him a co-host and he can't.
And nobody can share.
Start the meeting over?
I guess so.
Yeah, I, I.
I will, I will suggest that, yes.
Okay, everybody who's on this meeting, we're gonna try and start it over. Will that work?
How many people do we have?
Uh, all of these people. Six people.
Did you refresh your browser?
Let me try that. Did I kill her? No. Hey, it worked. Thank you. I don't want my mic on. We got it Omar. All I had to do was refresh. Because our genius came.
And that's what I'm doing to my computer.
But if I'm not here, you refreshed, it doesn't work.
Of course. Alright.
Stop right there.
Where's Greg? I just realized that. Lindsay, did you tell everybody about this meeting? Because Greg's not here.
I sent email about to leadership with the dates and times.
Well, we can't do, we can do Park and Rec. We'll start with Park. So I'm gonna switch to Park and Rec then. What page is Park and Rec? Culture and Recreation?
It's 90 something.
98. Let's see if this works. There we go.
Park and Rec is 101.
And the people from the library aren't here. Okay. I wanna move. There we go. Yes? John?
You win.
What we usually do, wow, this one, this thing sucks. Sorry. It won't move. It's apps, isn't working.
This might not be something we can do tonight, but is it possible that we could get like a copy of this budget as like a PDF of a document? It, it looks to me when I'm looking at it like it's a scanned image. Like this whole thing is just like a scanned image, at least what I got off the city website. It's enormous and it's not searchable right now. So I was hoping it would make this, this whole process a lot easier if we could just get this.
Well, I got a PDF, but if you think it's all scanned, I don't know what to tell you. Lindsay, tell us what you think.
So it was a PDF that we had to scan and initially, Karen and I were having some tech difficulties. But I just finished a new document today that is all in Word that I can send over.
Word? Well, I would send it as a PDF. Convert it as a PDF, but at least it won't be scanned.
It just doesn't have the, the, the numbers on it.
The numbers?
Which numbers?
So the budget, so all the information, but not the budget stuff. So I can add all that in in the morning.
Alright, well, um, my problem is.
This is the best we could do with the programs we had right now.
Well, now it's moving. I'm gonna just say that the library got an increase. You're looking up there. Oh wait. A bigger. From two.
Move it to the side.
Can't see the numbers?
Well, yeah, but you can't see the numbers on the other side. But okay, that's good.
Alright, Matt. Well.
Yeah, okay.
213 is what we have for 220, 2021. 216 to 18. It looks like the mayor has given approximately $3,600 more. 3,600 more this year. Am I reading that correctly, everybody? So that's a good thing. Well now. Nobody's here to talk about it, so I'm gonna move on. I'm, I'm sorry, we don't have much time, President Gomez, to go back over this stuff. So if people don't show up, I don't know what to do except go over it for the counselors. Finance Committee, do you agree with that? Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what else we're supposed to do if, you know, somebody's not here to present their narrative. I mean, I, in some cases. Sure.
What? Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
In some cases, there's questions I'd like to ask, so I hope people do show up, but I guess it is what it is.
We do have the Director of Parks and Recreation here. So John, usually what I do is ask the department head to go over their narrative. If there's anything they want to add to the narrative or say anything special, and then we go over the dollars.
So, um, are you ready for meeting?
Yes, 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 go.
So the last few years have been particularly tough for our department with COVID. Revenue streams providing services to the public, trying to maintain health and safety guidelines, working with the mayor, the board of health, city council, and all the folks on park policies and procedures. We managed through that, we navigated through it. We were able to run a Camp Non-Hack program last year. We were able to bring back some events. We had a harvest fest at the end of the year. So we were able to kinda manage through it this year, moving forward. Bringing arts in the park back, movie nights are coming back. Camp Non-Hack is at capacity. So without hopefully to have the pool up and running this year. An interview with the pool manager today. Lifeguard interviews, some lifeguard interviews next week. We're not the only city dealing with that. It's a statewide, western Mass-wide shortage of lifeguard. We're pushing along the plans to get the pool open as well, so. That's the recap on Parks and Rec.
Well, I've noticed there's nothing in this budget that stands out to me. Is there anything in here, counselors, that you see that you have questions on? I'll start with Councilor Peak.
Uh, thanks. Um, I'm sure there's a good reason, but I just, you know, when I'm going over this, it does look like the budget for temp positions has increased by about 20%. And I was just hoping to get a little narrative around what's going on there.
Are you on the 6,500 one?
No, the temp positions, it looks like it went from 109, 608 to 126, 700.
Yeah, he's talking about this. He's talking about this one, yeah. John, that's correct.
Yeah, so that, that is adding a position that would be an outdoor outside the park maintenance that would deal with, as we take on more properties throughout the city, including East Street. And we have Main Street Cemetery now. We're looking at getting, worked on a new city. So it, the board block here, so having a dedicated person for 39 weeks that will deal with mowing of properties, planting, drawing all the other properties that we have. You know, the park itself is 280 acres, that's allowed to manage for the, for the staff. So that's where that increases, is taking a 29-week position and making it 40 weeks and then adding weeks to the position itself.
Okay, great, thank you.
What the heck did I do? Sorry guys, trying to figure out how I can make this. Can you read it?
Yeah, you can read it.
Um, John, we have more positions. Because you haven't been open, I'm assuming you hire more temp positions as well that you didn't hire in the past because you didn't have programs going.
Yeah, so for this budget, so the, these temp positions are toll booth, which we didn't have the last two years. So we've been, we've given that money back, security, which is security has been reduced their hours, we slashed that. We did retain security, but you know, their hours were reduced as well. So I'm, it's bringing back the staff from pre-pandemic to the, the levels of service. Okay, and then, you know, another thing you'll see minimum wage has gone up quite a bit in the last few years too, as well. So you start adding $2, $3 more an hour compared to what it was three, four years ago. It adds up for these part-time positions.
And that explains why we jumped from 220 in your bottom line of personnel expenses to 234.
Yes.
Any questions from any counselors? Hey Lindsay, any chance you could call Greg Nudelman and ask him?
So I just did, I sent him a text, but I'll give him a call.
He texted me and said that he had it on his calendar for 6:00 PM. He'll be here in the next 20 minutes if it's not late.
Why would he have six? I've never said six.
I, yeah.
It's not my fault.
No, he is saying I had it on my calendar for six. I can be there in 20 minutes.
Alright. Never mind Lindsay. Okay, cemetery, uh, can I ask you something? Because it always comes up, especially when you're dealing with requests for new facilities. How is your maintenance lines going? There she is.
So.
Okay, Greg thinks it's a six o'clock meeting.
I was, I was at the other, I was at energy advisor.
Maintenance line for, for what we get. You know, going back to FY 2012, 11 years ago. Our budget has remained stagnant for expense line. We've added 2,500 to our budget over the years for the rail trail. We've added 3,500 for taking on extra facilities and properties during that time. And then electric, a big chunk of our budget is electric. Basically, one-third of our budget goes directly to paying a resource. So to operate our facility. So you take those, those chunks in there that have been added by them, we pretty much have stayed stagnant on vehicle repairs, everything else that's, that's gone along with it. As far as maintenance itself, you know, I have submitted a capital plan for a maintenance building. And we are pushing for, towards something to be done for that as well down there this fall.
Okay. Anybody else on Park and Rec?
That one's our rec one, Dan.
This is Rec here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Where is?
That one's the first one.
Does anybody have the page for cemetery?
Cemetery is 4910, so it's different.
I know, but what page is it on? Do you know Omar? I forgot to get it set up, although there's nothing. I, I looked at it, there's nothing major about it.
Uh, section 49.
You use Ctrl F40.
So yeah, yep.
I'm using an app that we had to download. So I'm going to have to, what page?
114.
Of the actual document?
Yep. I'm trying. Corinne's gonna get me Adobe because this particular app sucks. Not that I want anybody to. Let's see if it comes in there. That's Enterprise.
No, it's 114. It's.
I guess I have the wrong app.
On the actual.
It's on, that's on the actual document. I'm trying to find it. Okay, it's Public Works.
Okay, I apologize. This app is terrible, so. I have Enterprise at 113, so I don't think it's 114.
No, it's not. It's up near.
This is this kind of app.
It's 86.
86? Alright then. I can do this. Well, when I was using Adobe at home on my computer, this whole program was no problem. I was able to move quickly through it, so. Anything in cemetery you want to bring up?
Yeah, so in cemetery, we've had the Main Street Administrative put on us a couple of years back. It's expanding. Riverside Industries is, would do the, we got outsourced mowing for there, so it wasn't on our department for maintenance and upkeep. Riverside informed us last week that they're no longer able to, staffing-wise, to be able to mow and take care of Main Street. So now that's been moved to, our cemetery guys are now taking care of Main Street as part of the package as well. So there started actually today. There, and you know, just in time for trying to get ready for Memorial Day weekend. So they're, uh, they're gonna do their best to get it ready for the weekend and then moving forward, they're gonna stay on top of it, so.
So Riverside's personnel always did Main Street Cemetery?
Yeah, so, yeah, so when we didn't have it, when it was a their own Main Street Cemetery Commission, they outsourced it to Riverside for mowing. They outsourced the irrigation, all those other things. So now it's moved to us for burial, things like that, but now it's the maintenance pieces is moved to us now as well.
Okay. It's unfortunate, but that's more work for you, huh?
Yeah. We do what we have to do.
Okay, anybody else have questions on cemetery? Lindsay Mailer raised a hand. Lindsay?
I just wanted to make a suggestion, if it's okay with Hadal and the mayor, that maybe you guys could use the document in our shared drive, which is an Excel spreadsheet for the sake of ease of access tonight, and then I can send you guys over a better searchable document tomorrow.
Well. Can you email it to me and then I could put it up? And this is my particular account. So if you email me, maybe I can do that. I seem to be moving this alright now, but we will get this fixed before next meeting. Anyway, Tree Warden.
That's DPW now.
Oh, right, forget it. Forgot. Keep moving people around. Alright, well, thank you, John. Anybody have any more questions for John? So the way this works is we'll, we'll do a vote on the eight counselors. And if you have a serious question, policy has been to ask that department head to come back because you're not sure of something. We only have the authority to cut. So if you ask them back, it might mean, hey, if you don't explain this correctly, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend a cut. So that could be the implication. However, if you don't feel there's any reason to bring a department head back, we don't bring them back on the eighth for the votes. Correct Omar? Okay.
If anybody has any questions at any point until the eighth, I'm available for anything that, something pops up that.
That's the other thing, just email. Okay, so we're waiting on Greg, who thought it was a six o'clock meeting. Lindsay, did you send that to me? Yep. I don't know. Okay, you said that, but you, did you send me, you didn't send me, you didn't send me an Excel sheet, did you?
No, I can if you'd like me to.
I don't know, I think I could. Excel is on this computer, so it should come up better.
It's a good spreadsheet.
Huh?
It's a good spreadsheet.
So it'll work. Well, send it to me because we're waiting on Greg anywhere. I just don't like this Lumen app and I, for some reason, thought there'd be, oh boy. I apologize to all of you who just joined the meeting. I was having a little technical difficulties, but we're all set. Lindsay, you have your hand still up? No.
Just forgot to put it down, sorry.
So why don't you send me that and we'll see if, if it'll work better. Otherwise, I'm just gonna use the one I have. Maybe there's a different app I can use. Or maybe I'll just use it in the except I don't know what page I'm on, see, this doesn't work.
What are you looking for?
If I use Google Docs, would that work better? You think? For the PDF version of the?
We have a order from PDF to Google Doc.
I just did it. Well, it seems to move better. I need to know what page I'm on.
Sorry, thank you. Have a good night.
Dan, I just sent the Excel spreadsheet and Hadal can show you what tab to use.
Good thing you're here.
But I have to download it to put it into my Google Drive, so I'm gonna do that now. Of course, now I gotta find that on this computer. Does that do it? That must do it. Right?
It's opening as Excel.
It says so.
Yep.
What does this mean?
Do you have a license?
If we don't have a license, we can't use it. You don't have a license on our computer? This is a city computer.
License goes by if we need it. So if you cancel out of that and cancel. Say enable everything. Oh, yeah, you can.
Okay, so how, oh, I didn't want to do that, but anyway, how do I get to a page?
If you see that little arrow at the bottom?
This one?
Yep. And keep going. Yep, keep going down, yeah.
Oh, I see.
And you're gonna stop at four, or see that, that three little dots next to arrow? Going the other way. Okay, let's click on these three little dots here. Yep, keep going, keep going. You, you need to see, number starts with 401.
Oh, that's for?
Yes, for DPW.
So this is like your document? Okay. I can't just jump to it somehow?
You should.
401.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, so you're gonna start with there.
And that's what I'm in, right here?
Yeah, that's where, that's just the.
How do I get rid of this up here?
Um, you just go onto the file or home, click on home. Yep.
But I wanna. Let me share my.
Again, share.
I think I can make it bigger with my hands. How's that, guys? Thank you, Hadal.
See, Hadal now is working the IT department.
Give her a raise, too.
This is just the numbers, so we're just gonna let the department heads talk about the narrative that's in the budget.
So I called you all here today to just say happy birthday to Omar on Sunday.
Thank you, Dan.
Can I subtract 20 years off of it for you?
That's gonna make you 25.
That's right. Finally said I was 45, or a triple year's time. Pretty sure I said five o'clock everywhere I sent this.
I don't know the Lisa's sense.
When somebody says that they thought it was six o'clock, I always blame myself.
But I just saw the email, I said, I think.
The original email.
And it's five on the city website as well.
Oh, it's also on the calendar.
Yes.
That's what I do.
Yep.
So when I wanna go to the next. Hadal.
Yes.
The problem here is they put this thing, oh, hi, okay. So I just do this to go to the next one. Is that too, too big, right? You read that?
Yeah. Just scooch it over to the right a little bit. Just in case, so people know, like, there's nothing past that.
For everybody on the call, we're waiting on the Director of Public Works who's on his way.
I got stuck in my head.
So. I usually send out a reminder email to people. But I said, they all should. Because I value all of our time, I'm gonna send a reminder out for Wednesday to any department head that's supposed to be.
They're always.
Except for it's Monday.
Huh?
Except for today's Monday.
Wednesday is the next meeting.
Yes.
Are you, your meetings are always five o'clock? Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the bill, look at me. I'm here, I'm here. And this is the first time that I have no permission.
They're doing pretty good, Omar.
They're losing today.
Who they playing?
Who's losing?
Something so.
Sounds heavily.
Yes, I follow it, the app, and they show you. This base is loaded, two hours. The border third. And somehow it's heated.
Ready then?
Who took the pictures?
I paid someone.
That must be awesome. I wanna do that so bad. I probably shouldn't. So when you landed, you landed, you didn't land on your feet?
No, I can show you.
Was it scary?
You know, I was standing at the door. And I was like, oh, man, and then we just. And then. This, the scariest part was when the chute, you like let the chute, I just heard a bunch of noise and I didn't understand what it was, and so I.
You get a big G thing when the chute.
Yeah, you just go, whoa.
It does stop you pretty fast.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that I don't.
Let me see.
I, I have a bottle of water in, is there water here, someplace?
I have a gallon of water.
What's in here? Oh, that's not a bottle.
I do have a gallon of water and I can drink.
You, why left my bottle of water in the car? I know, I know. There's a gallon of water in here.
You should all go upstairs, in that room, filled with that water. And I know she's. She's not.
Can I use this opportunity for the sake of minutes to say? Okay, so I just, I can see the table, but I can't exactly make out everybody that's there. So who I've got is the three people on finance, plus Omar, Brad, John Mason, Lindsey Mailer, the mayor, Jessica Heber.
Not at the table, Lindsey Mailer's on the.
I know, but she's a participant. I'm just figuring participants. And, uh, Hadal, is that who's there, like?
Jessica Heber? Jessica Heber?
Yes.
That's everybody.
Great. And hopefully eventually Greg.
And Greg's supposed to be here soon. He said that. There you go.
You're the best, Hadal. Honest to God.
You are cooking, she can fix it. You are, she got a lot of water. It's not when you're gonna ask for food.
It has to be authentic cultural food from. I'm waiting for home.
I gotta convince my mother, because she cooks.
You don't cook at home?
No, only for weekends and, um, yeah. Special one on demand of, from kids. I usually don't have enough time to cook.
Yeah.
So I thought this meeting would be not too long. About the land?
Yeah.
Shouldn't show me this, because now I'm gonna wanna do. So your heels kind of back.
Yeah, lift your legs up and then he comes in underneath of you. Kind of slide down.
I said this about skiing. Doctor said you can ski, why don't you never fall, never run into anybody? You got this big torque of a lever on your foot. And you got a brand new hip and a brand new knee, so what do you think's gonna happen if you torque them wrong? He scared me out of skiing, and then he said, but I had this ski instructor from. From Switzerland who came in and I had to replace both their knees. And she went out and she's still instructing over there. I said, well, that's her living, though.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, it screwed up.
So all this means, Greg, is you're gonna have to buy dinner for everybody.
I'm sorry. I put it in my calendar.
I checked. I always think when I, when it's, you say six, I made a mistake, but nope.
Hold on the charger. I'm here, though, so how's everyone?
So the meeting is gonna start over again? No. Greg, I'm sharing the numbers. We had a little application problem, so we just have the Excel spreadsheet up there.
Okay.
But the narrative that is in the document, I always ask the department heads, you were here last time, to go over the narrative and. What's new in your department, what's trending, and I know we have some serious capital problems, maybe you could touch on those, not in the budget, but normally. Ask for supplementals to fix things, so I'm just curious, where the state of the Department of Public Works?
Are we, Ron?
Yeah, we're recording. I never stopped recording.
Wanna start with Public Works or Enterprise or?
Public Works, then we'll go to Enterprise. That makes two of us. I was just gonna let you. Speak to it, you didn't have to.
Oh, I'm just getting, trying to get the.
What is that DP?
I don't know.
Is it your computer?
It's Omar, it's President Gomez.
You're probably running out of power, huh?
It's a reminder that his birthday is coming up.
Yeah, I need a new computer.
I mean. So, okay, well, I'll start with. Building operations. Oh. In building operations, we take, our responsibilities are taking care of the public safety complex, City Hall, and the Council on Aging. And there's building, you know, with the most issues in the. Building up in, of those three buildings is, um, the Council on Aging, I think we have some pretty major investments we need to make there, like speed to capital improvements.
Okay.
There's just a lot of modernization that I think that facility could, could use. I've been working with Cindy over there on. Starting feasibility study to really take a better look at. How, you know, what the best way to move the COA forward is. As far as building operations goes, and we've also. Mayor's really taking a lead on the Honeywell project, getting. Things, City Hall, Public Safety, for, for modern energy standard, and making them run more efficiently, so. Our wholesome mind well and starting to implement that, that project, bringing it to life, so. Nice to see things moving along.
Okay. Nothing else in the narrative you wanna go over? I'm just gonna start with DPW administration, I think that's first up here. And that's what I have up, is that what you guys have? See that, okay? Not a big change necessarily in there. It's up 107 supervisory. Some of that might be pay plan changes or step increases, correct?
It is.
Okay. Everybody will remember what pay plan step increases are every year, okay? Uh, so that's, uh, I have nothing else on this page. Do, does anybody have anything on this page, Omar, anything?
Yeah, um. I was just wondering, just, this is my first time on Finance Committee. It seems like for a good deal of these things, the, the, the to date spend down is. Hovering about, just over half of where, what was budgeted. Like, I'm, I'm just, what should I make of that? Is there, is there a reason that some of it gets paid out all right at the end, or was this to date a while ago, or? What's going on with that?
Hadal?
So the whole budget process starts in-house, somewhere at the end of January, beginning of February, so one needs templates were pulled from the system. Was somewhere around either mid of, middle of the January and the expenses were posted as of December or January first or second week. That's why the year-to-date is showing what was on the date when the templates were pulled to work, work on the process.
So these are like January?
Probably, yes. January or.
So then we would expect a little over half, okay? Given that it came out the other day, my first guess, when it says to date, would mean as of the date that it was published, so.
That would be different than what it is right on the screen right now, but some departments, they do have expenses, especially like unclassified. They have expenses which needs to be paid in the month of July, so when we run the report in August, it, it shows that it's 100% spent. So it depends on which part you're looking at.
I'm assuming the actual 2021, those are all zeros because of COVID and.
Oh, we still operated, we were definitely.
You mean here, this part?
Yeah. At 2020, it looks like there's some zeros, and so is there a shift in something, or?
We consolidated the IT department.
Okay, so that's.
Different, and we might have started with that. I, I wanna confirm, and 2021. Like education and training, maybe it was COVID, but the radio telecoms. I need to make sure that it's because of the consolidation.
I know some things of the IT, but I wasn't sure if.
Yeah, but I, I, the 2021 confused me a little bit. I, I'll make a note and get back to the, so many.
Column E is 2022 budget, right, Hadal?
2022. Eighty-nine thousand?
E.
That's original.
That's the original budget?
Yeah.
So we did have a budget line there and then, okay. All right.
So I guess then my question, following up on that, is. If we didn't spend anything from these line items in 2021, and we haven't spent anything from these line items in 2022. I mean, it's a small amount of money, but should, are these things we should be budgeting for in 2023? Like, or are these things that have been consolidated into IT?
Well, we have, the mayor's recommending, F is recommended, right? Recommending these, these lines right here.
No, H is recommended.
Right, so if.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
So if it's zero and it got consolidated, then why do we have five?
Right, and, and that's what I wanna check. That doesn't, I mean, advertising, education and training, professional service, and insight, in-state travel. All should be funded, but the two zeros. Should be zero in 2023.
I, I feel like that might just be a small typo or something.
Okay, but we wanna, I, I wanna make sure.
Like that, the radio, that might cover the ratio and. In my vehicle, one of my, my handheld radio broke, we might replace it, but my stuff works pretty good, so that's why it's a small amount.
Cause this is DPW administration.
Administration.
So there's only two people, right?
Yeah, me and Michelle and Ariel, but the advertising would be, if we had a position open, we might fund it from there.
Yeah, I, I just, it's column D. That I'm not, I'm not following, and then by H would have something. Um, is, I, I will follow up. Let me pull the, the detail and see if it's typo or whatnot, it will be really.
Do you think the translation from this Excel spreadsheet to the actual budget you put out may have missed some numbers or something?
No, I have to print out from this.
And the same numbers?
I mean, I'm looking at those numbers, too.
Okay, I'm gonna go to fuel if nobody has any other questions.
Um, Council, I mean Chairess, I have a, a point. Um, so building operations, which is overseen by DPW or Public Works, I, I just wanna make a point that the building operating. Operations actually come under general government, so round, like the vote or whatnot. When you look at the table of contents. It's, it's there, that vote technically covered, the vote tonight from the committee, wouldn't necessarily, it doesn't cover building ops, even though. The Department of Public Works doesn't.
Okay, so you came late. We vote on this budget, there's no votes until the eighth of June.
Oh, so finances and voting.
Until the eighth of June. We give the finance, we started this the last couple of years. So that Finance Committee members, counselors could absorb stuff and maybe have more questions. And ask a department head to come back if there are.
My apologies.
No problem. You may have to come back just to sit through all the votes anyway. Fuel. I have a question, because I see this ARPA funds to be used for any deficit during, um, I like that, but can I have an explanation? You're just using funds that American Rescue Funds?
No, but the assumption, and we've seen it this year, is that um gas escalation can be connected and it can allow it will spend under ARPA, so we're seeing expenses in our budget in our budget line items or any line items that could be related to ARPA, we're using those one-time funds um rather than for appropriation or whatnot, we're trying to leave our our capital, our reserves and using the one-time fund.
Okay, so there are certain restrictions, so you feel confident that when you use it, you're okay?
Yeah, so they changed the rules and allowed up to $10 million of a city's ARPA um allocation to be classified under revenue replacement, revenue replacement can be spent on any government service. A government service would be buying fuel.
Obviously.
Therefore, it's covered under our, the use, the ARPA use, it was not that, that's that's a big change, that's wonderful for us.
The only concern, and you mentioned it, it's one-time funds, so it's not structural, so next year or the following year, when you don't have ARPA money, we gotta make up those months somehow.
We're hoping, right, economically, we're hoping that fuel is different, we'll watch the trend, and we forecasted for three years on revenue and expenditure, so we can um account for that.
Okay.
The budget, it's one year at a time, but we forecast, we forecast out five years, I think there will be adjustments in the next four years, given just the advantage, so using the one-time funds.
Okay, anybody else have questions, I'm fuel. Tom, I'm not seeing your hand up, so if you do.
Oh, not really, I guess uh all I would chip in is, this is why it's a good idea to keep electrifying our fleet, uh, but.
That's why we want those big electric snowplows.
I always like to mention too that that is every vehicle in the city, it's not just DPW vehicles.
That's important, everybody needs to know, the DPW does put gas in everybody's car, everybody's vehicle, everybody's.
Wow, everybody.
Every government vehicle, right, city, I'm I'm serious, like, if there's a vehicle given to the assessors, you put fuel. Not everybody's vehicle, you know what I meant.
I didn't, but now I do.
Engineering, here's some ten hours for the ARPA for engineer, I like it. Uh. I don't see anything here that stands out, there's an $8,000 increase in salary, but that's probably step in and pay plan, correct, so. These numbers do not, the way I look at it, so everybody, you guys know, is I look for big-ticket changes, because they pop out at me, like, why did we zero this out, because it went to IT? So, I don't look at the small numbers, I don't nickel and dime budget stuff. And the other thing to mention is every department probably asks the mayor for more than they're gonna get. Say, I really would love this, but and then, so it's hard for me to cut even further a budget that was probably cut by the mayor if she was asked by that department head for more money and didn't get. That's just a policy I have, but doesn't have to be yours. Uh, Connie, Tom, anything on this, Omar?
These are.
Who wants to be first?
No, I was just gonna say, I don't, these are small increases, I think that.
Usually it's three percent increase.
Yeah.
Oh, so this year's budget letter, so.
Three percent.
Yeah, it's three percent, but that's only on expense, so personnel, I asked, I directed the department heads to not cut personnel, so raises, K-plan, uh, collect working units, whatever that cost was, there was no negotiation, there was just put that in as you have in your budget. So, it wasn't about, look, your personnel line, that that bottom line, that 159 needs to come down three percent, or you're only getting three percent, it was whatever the salary increase was as negotiated for a pay plan for general wage assessment. So, each department had put in their act personnel expenses, we just checked the FTEs, then when it got down, um, the purchase of services, I asked for a budget of one percent, two percent, three percent, but only on what you see under that total personnel.
So, in this case, this is, what are we, in engineering, right, so the engineer salaries, how many FTEs are in there too? All right, so when we jump to 158, you check to make sure they get the step increase or the pay plan increase we voted in, et cetera, and that's the number we see, and the auditor make sure it's correct.
One, one, I can change, but we did increase our city engineers' hours from seventy to eighty for pay period because of all the different projects we have.
And it looks like those ten hours are being played by our.
Yes.
Right, but the bottom line includes those hours, so looking at that 159, yes, it's because of raises and and whatnot, but also that jump to eighty hours, ten of those should be, could be taken out, and just for our expense.
The rest of it, yeah.
Hadel, can you speak this way when you speak, because of the microphone here, okay?
So, those ten hours are gonna charge directly to the ARPA fund as a salary.
Right.
This 158 is actually seventy hours for engineer and seventy hours for junior engineer. And the way this calculated is by cycle, from Ju- July to December is one step and thirteen cycles of payroll, and January to June is on the next step after our pay plan, and that is calculated on thirteen cycles of.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Connie?
Um, so again, there's on actuals for 2021, computer form supplies, printing supplies, tool supplies, there's zeros, and then it's budgeted for 2022, and then it was adjusted, and nothing has been spent, and we have that same number, so are these purchases that are gonna come at the end of the year?
Again, that was, just for Hadel, that was, this is an actual to date, it's probably January spent.
No, I understand that, so that's what I'm saying, so are these expenses that we anticipate coming?
They could, I mean, if the engineers say the laser stops working that they used to go through grades, or someone's laptop, or they will probably put the laptop on at my team.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous engineering tools that they use, generally when they need something, it's, if we can wait in the year, just in case, try to.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that, okay.
A lot of departments do turn in funds at the end of the year, translate into free cash once it's all certified.
Right.
And if we saw continuing zeros in those line items, then we would condense and get rid of the line item.
Okay.
So, there are some, I don't think it's the same case as the other, when we found those zeros, that's odd, that it was all zero. That's the, like, computer services, um, printing tools and supplies, although into general central services, so we buy that out of the department, all of the departments.
Anything else, Connie?
I'm just curious also, dues and membership, what what did we start doing, I'm, I think it's fine, I'm just curious, what?
American Society of Civil Engineers, things like that, that that dinner, or for engineers might be a member of.
Uh, yeah, I think that's.
National Water Works Association, American Water Works Association, things like that.
Good.
I think it's great, I'm just curious.
Anything else? Thomas, anything?
No, I'm good here.
Okay, moving, Omar, anything? Moving on to highway. Everybody see that, how many FTEs in highway?
Eight.
Okay. You actually went down from the adjusted budget to the, is that because maybe we have entry level, or is this negotiation, I'm just curious, I'm not, it's no big deal, but you went down $4,000, salary. You see the first line?
Yeah, with with, um, it's contractual, and we've got some newer employees there that.
New employees, that's what I thought, they start off.
Aren't as high on the pay scale.
Good, that's what I expected.
Two, actually, that started last last year, so.
Okay, so I don't see anything on this expense line that jumps out at me. Refunded like this, the tumulus concrete is still eighty-seven, five eighty-five, that's for repairing.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Yep, which is way up for 2023, so.
I imagine.
Might be.
So, you get to fix less roads.
Well.
Or fill a bunch of potholes that don't get filled.
Yep, or we need more money to fix the same.
Potholes today.
Prices.
Did you have a pothole problem?
Rebecca has a pothole problem.
Uh, yeah. Anybody have any questions on the expense side of the highway department budget? You do?
I mean.
Go ahead, Tom.
Is that something then that we should probably, we should be thinking about, if if you're saying like the line item for bituminous concrete is staying pretty steady, but the price is going way up, that are are we looking at that as something that we might be talking about, and, you know, free cash come later in the year or something?
We could be, I mean, I only received the bid, the Franklin Regional Council of Governments bids today, so it wasn't, it was too late to build them into.
Budget, yeah.
Next year, yeah.
I see. But you think this is enough to?
Yes.
You know, it'll be okay, okay?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I I imagine that everybody's supply lines are gonna go through the roof because supply costs are so high, inflation is so high, that you're gonna get halfway through the year and ask the mayor, look, I'm out of tumulus, I'm out of whatever, so that's sad, but that's reality.
And just so I'm clear, tumulus is asphalt?
Yep.
Yeah, that word concrete always throws.
Yeah, technical term for laptop.
Why don't I just call it the tumulus laptop?
Works for me, we can change that, that's easy.
All right, anybody else on this line, because I'm gonna move on? Snow removal, this is basically level funded, and again, we can change it like we just did, we add more. So, 200,000 is what we have budgeted for four years, three years through 2022. You can see in 2021, we had more snow, and it went up to 294, but that's why we budget at the end of the year to cover that. This is the only line that you can deficit spend, correct?
Yeah, we come back to City Council in the spring.
But it can be after the fact, you don't have to wait to get the money to spend it.
Yes.
Everybody understand that, that's snow, it's the only line that I think the DOR's rules or something, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only deficit spend as long as the budget is the amount which was on the previous budget.
Right.
It's consistently 200,000 dollars, if you don't do it, then what happens is the road that sells from as long as the we have to stop services until the appropriation doesn't go in, so what we do here is we put in a level funded every year, so we can deficit spend it, but before June 30th, we cover the deficit, so it doesn't need to be raised on a free cash, on a tap rate gap, or it doesn't hit our.
And this way, you don't have to over-budget it, let's say we have a really warm winter. Anybody on this, Tom, Connie?
I'm good.
Good, good, going forward. Streetlights. They're all LEDs, do we ever solve the problem of the bright ones?
We're picking away at them.
Well, how does that happen, I mean, does a company come in and put brighter lights in on you?
Well, we had a contract, we we took advantage of a grant program through EverSource, which led to replacement of all of our sodium.
Right.
Streetlights with LED lights, which should be projected to see a $25,000 a year energy savings. All the lights provided and installed highly on EverSource's expense, so with the electricity rates going up, may not necessarily be savings we are hoping for, but shouldn't over rates data be entered into the grant with them, because we were able to project $25,000.
Are you able to pick the lumen output per location, so that you don't?
Location. But we can.
If you have a neighbor complaining, what do you do?
All of you know, we'll try to, we'll try to fix it. One challenge is we don't have a budget truck or qualified staff to make repairs or adjustments to them ourselves. We have to at the mercy of a contractor, but we are, we're doing what we can to either shield, adjust, or otherwise deal with the ones that are too bright.
Okay, I'm hearing noise, I don't know where it's coming from.
I'm I'm not very savvy at this, so I just want to own that, so dimming them doesn't save electrical charges or anything like that?
We think, we can't actually dim them, we can shield them or adjust them, so that they're shining more straight down.
Oh, I see.
One of the problems is you put this new fixture up, and right, and if the pole happens to be bleeding a little bit, then the fixtures.
Right.
Not shining straight.
It's shining at the house.
Yeah, they're kind of.
I guess.
That situation, but we're, we're getting, like, if there's still an issue with the light, we don't generally hear about the ones anybody likes, we only hear about complaints, or if it gets to be sometimes a hell of a.
Welcome to government.
Yes.
I don't know, um, I don't want to get too far off track, but I actually, not, I'm not saying we could afford these right now, but I do believe I saw at MMA a few years back, LED streetlight dimmers that you can install. So, those things do exist, if you ever, or I don't know how good they are, but they were there, and they said that you could save a bunch of money with, by dimming the lights, but.
Being being in lighting, the fixture itself has to be dimmable.
Yes.
So, depends on what they do, Tom, if they install.
LEDs are dimmable, aren't they? Well, anyway, I don't want to get.
Not necessarily. Anyway, uh, I have, I think I have traffic up here, right? Is this motor?
Before you go, I have a question.
Oh, back, you want to go back to streetlights?
Yeah, um, because Greg said that he thinks whether we're gonna get $25,000 in savings, but I didn't see it. The reason is because we're not, we're not hundred percent sure if we're gonna get it.
Yeah.
And that we're gonna get it, we want.
I wouldn't be comfortable taking that out of the budget, because EverSource is prone to increasing, increasing rate, so if we're using less electricity, but they're charging more.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, motor repair. Um, we repair all the vehicles the city owns?
Yes.
The DPW?
Everything, school department, parks, and that, police cars, fire trucks, ambulances.
And how many FTEs does this salary?
Two.
Two people? I thought of this, I shouldn't, do they answer, go back to school to fix an all-electric or hybrid vehicle?
They.
Because we're gonna be buying them, I think.
Yep, uh, we are, you know, they're trying to keep up on the training with, like, lately, a lot with Ford, there's a couple hybrid vehicles at the police department fleet, so, uh, most of that stuff is becoming a pretty good warranty, so.
That's good. Anybody have any questions on this, it's not, uh, we go from one oh-three to one-ten because of is this negotiation, uh, or is this pay plan, I forget?
They are a DPW, a union in place.
Union in place, so that's what we're. Anything on the expense line, Tom, anything?
Nothing stands out to me.
Connie? Omar? Traffic. Explain what traffic is to our new members.
Uh, so traffic, we fund repairs, so we'll buy paint for sidewalk, uh, paint for crosswalks, paint for stop lines, pay for the roads to be re-striped summer, uh, flashing LED crosswalk signs, things of that nature, pedestrian signs.
So, we hire somebody, because it's, it's exterior professional services, we hire people to do that, it's not our people.
Uh, for the majority of the line painting, no, we we it's not our people, but crosswalks and. But crosswalks and stop bars, things like that, our, our guys do paint house, parking spots.
Okay.
When it's long, stripes of fog liner, double yellow, that we do have a contractor.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
So you said flashing lights also?
Uh, we'll buy like, uh, I think from traffic, we funded flashing pedestrian signs for the crosswalk on Pleasant.
Okay, that's what I was.
Just, that's just an example, so.
Okay, Tom, anything?
No.
Uh, is that it? What's this here?
Recycling hazardous waste scrap.
This is still you, right?
Yep.
Okay. You seeing any increases in any of those areas? Cost of recycling or trash pickup or anything?
Trash pickup, we are working on a new contract as the schools close and we transition to just having to. Buildings, so there'll be some changes in that contract, but I think if anything, it'll be a decrease. I just don't have that, all that information yet.
Okay. Anybody on this? That concludes DPW, does it not? We go to enterprise next. Is that the end? Hedo? Oh, where's the tree warden? What number is that? Oh, here, here we are. Right, it used to be under Park. It's, we have a new tree ward, complimented the other day.
Sarah's.
But Sarah's getting paid per DM or is this?
She gets a stipend.
A stipend. Does she have another job at DPW or we just hire her out as?
She hasn't, she does not work as a full-time employee for the city. She has a full-time urban forester, her, her, um, asking scars.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we are very, very fortunate to.
I was going to say, you have an expert there.
Absolutely. You're very lucky.
Anybody have any questions on our wonderful tree warden? But it says tree warden services. What does that mean?
That will pay for tree removals, trimmings.
You have to hire someone to get the true tree out of them.
Yeah, we don't have a bucket truck or.
One of those big things that picks up the big log.
Yes.
Or to cut a tree down. Tree warden says, cut this tree down, but you hire someone to do.
Generally, we do, yeah. If it's a smaller tree and we can handle it with our staff, we'll, we'll take care of it. One off the bike path today that fell in the storm last night, but, um, say it's a big tree on Royal Street near someone's house that, that will contract out.
Okay, good to know. One of the reasons I ask these questions, counselors, is people watching can understand the budget as well. Sorry, I should have muted my phone. All right, what else do we have for you? Anything? Uh, DPW, we're going to go to enterprise next. What number is enterprise?
It should be at the very end, on the right side.
Keep going till I go.
The first one would be four, four, one, no.
This is sewer.
And starts with the enterprise part. Sewer wastewater, water, water.
Can everybody see that? I'll try to make it a little bigger. I don't know why it won't go over here this way. There you go. Okay. Is that it right? No. Oh, that's okay. So these are DPW union employees for the most part here.
Yep, uh, so the enterprise is your drinking water, sanitary sewers. Drainage. Take care of all the city drainage out of sewer apartment.
So for Connie and Brad, enterprise is run like a business. It's paid for by your water rates, your sewer rates, so it's a service you get. And that's why they call it enterprise. It's solely different than the way other services are done. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, it also funds the operation of the wastewater treatment.
Right, but it's all funded through the money you pay directly to enterprise from your sewer. Why? Oh, no, never mind. I looked at the wrong column. What does professional services pay for? Line four-ten, five-three, one-nine, miscellaneous professional services right here.
That would be, we have to send samples out.
Oh, I didn't know it did that. I apologize. I drew a line.
You're on sewer, four, four, ten. So that would, we, we have to bring in a camera company to, to drag a rover camera down a sewer line.
Ah, we had it to that for the one. Broke last year.
Quite a bit, um.
Okay.
Trying to think of what other professional services.
Only because it's a big number and I was curious what.
And if we need an engineering firm to take a look at something special that we have to have some minor, you know, on or set of plants.
Strictly for sewer?
Yes.
You probably have the same line item and water.
Yes, and waste, yeah.
And we have bituminous concrete because if we have to dig up a sewer, we have to replace.
Yep, we have to cut the road and then sell the blacktop.
Okay. Any questions from either of the counselors on the committee? Can't see your hand up, Tom, so if you have any. Are you good, Tom?
I am good.
Connie?
Yeah, I'm good.
Omar? Good? Uh, what did I just do? I don't know what I just did.
Scroll down further.
All right, uh, wait a minute. This is wastewater treatment plant, which is, again, we have a lot of people in there. How many FTEs does that cover? Four hundred fifty-five?
The wastewater treatment plant, which I have all of the, but I think at wastewater, there's also eight.
Okay. Okay.
Is this another case where there was some turnover and there's younger or, or less experienced people there? Because I see that the, uh, the salaries has actually dipped a bit.
No, we have not had, we do have an employee retiring there in July, but. Yeah, so we funded that lower on the scale for next year.
Because next year, that person being hired would be less of a.
Yes.
Expense. Okay.
Yep.
So it's sewer, we have five point five FTEs. And then wastewater, eight, and then water, seven.
Okay. Good. Miscellaneous professional services, I imagine down there, we have a lot of need, the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
That's bringing in somebody to analyze and repair something that you guys can't.
Be, there's a, a lot of repairs we try to do in-house and the guys are really good at, at keeping things rolling. But you have to, once in a while, bring in a contractor to help with a, say, a pump alignment or replacement of a larger pump that we don't have to change out.
Well, you've used the money every year, so.
That'll also pay for the lab testing services, uh, anything that we have to send out. A lot of analytics we have to do on the wastewater, to stay in compliance with the regulations.
Okay. Good. Anybody have any questions on the expense lines here? Connie?
Question, so again, the radio. Telephone communications from like twenty-seven hundred dollars to eleven thousand dollars? And I'm just curious why that jump?
Let's see, what year is, uh, twenty twenty? She's looking at twenty twenty versus twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
So twenty twenty-one was two hundred and eight dollars, so I'm just curious.
We upgraded a lot of the communication equipment from the remote pump stations to the wastewater treatment plant itself, and they come with cellular bills.
Okay.
Everything communicating.
Yep.
That would explain a portion of that.
That way you know if a sewer pump died.
Yeah, so if a pump station goes down, we get it, we, we know what's going on. We can, they can log in down there and look and see when, when it last ran or what the current levels are.
You don't have to wait for it to leak on it.
No, we don't want to do that.
Oh, what did you do before?
Well, they, there was phone lines that.
Oh.
A lot of the technology that, a lot of alarms or like come on on a panel.
I gotcha. Okay, so we went from analog to digital.
Yes.
Very good. Important to know. Anything from anybody on this? I'm going slowly. I'm scrolling up.
It looks good to me.
You okay, Tom? Omar? Connie, anything? Now we're into water. Water department, what'd you say, mayor? Eight FTE?
Five.
Five? And, uh, again, they are all unionized employees.
Yes. Point five is the supervisor's partially funded from sewer.
So I see overtime is reduced from sixty-seven to fifty, and I guess that's just a guess because you don't know what water line's going to break.
Yeah.
And if you have to bring somebody in at two in the morning, they get overtime.
Yes. It's to the.
So people know why we have to have that.
Yes.
Okay. Miscellaneous professional services is the same. You bring somebody in for water, check pipes, radar, something.
Uh, yeah, we'll do vibration analysis as one example on, on the well pumps. On something like a service like that out of special services. Also, again, lab, lab services, drinking water testing.
Okay. Anything else? Tom, do you have anything on this?
Doesn't, I'm not seeing any major changes that don't make sense.
Connie? This is reserve fund, which we rarely use. That's just to quickly appropriate funds, transfer. I forget, Dale Knappian, that's still a interdepartmental transfer. You, it has to go to council if we wanted to.
Yeah. Just like, um, the different transfer for.
The general fund. Yeah.
That needs to book itself.
So they put it in, uh, rarely used. I guess you have to have it, right? Just in case.
Yeah, it's, it's helpful if there is a need for announcement, transfer on June thirtieth, something breaks down. And if it's not used, then it closes to retain earnings, just like general fund closes to free cash. So it's just there to have any emergencies needed to be taken care of in the state of raising on the cap.
So everybody understands retained earnings is the free cash on the enterprise side. So if. The DPW doesn't use all the funds at enterprise, they turn into retained earnings. I'm saying this for the public as well as our new counselors and retained earnings, you'll see that when you see it in an appropriate supplemental. It's as if they were doing free cash in the general fund side. It's the same. Okay, that's it, right? Nothing else?
I'm good. Yeah, I got, I think DPW, we are responsible for a lot of different things.
So when we get to building operations, we'll see it under the general government. Do we need him back for that, guys? If you have any, look at the budget, Tom and Connie, and if you see anything, email.
We're starting the meetings at four o'clock.
Yeah, we should say that just to make you sit here.
That's true.
Well, I want to thank everybody, uh, and all the citizens who listened in. Thank you all. We've already done, uh, culture and recreation. So, uh. As I said before, we vote on everything on the eighth. We basically look at the actual motions, by the way, we're going to need those again, Hedo. Professional motions.
Yes, I prepared it this afternoon. I'll show.
We're not in a hurry, but on the eighth, we'll use them. Eighth of two. And we usually don't call a department head back unless some counselor has a serious issue that they want to bring up to that. And that's the committee. Then it goes to public hearing on the fifteenth. Thank you all. You good, Tom?
Yes, I'm good.
Now, minutes wise, you might want to look at what Peg did for these minutes. Um, I think they were more general, but. For specificity.
Minutes all night, so that's what you're going to get. Uh, but I will look at those looking for, for going forward.
All right, so, and we do need the eleventh minute. Okay, thank you all. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Summons.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, to adjourn, uh. Counselor, uh.
Me?
I was going to say.
I.
Connie? Counselor Pete?
Aye.
Counselor Ruth says aye. Thank you, everybody.